We're ready to go. Okay, it is a little bit after six. We are going, we're coming back from a closed session. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barbie?
Here.
Councilmember Bran? Not here. Councilmember Horvath?
Here.
Councilmember San Marco? Not here. Councilmember MD?
Here.
Mayor Aspel?
Here. And I will announce that both councilmembers, San Marco and Bran were in closed session.
Yes.
They were.
Okay, I'm adjourned to the regular meeting. Can I have a roll call for regular city council?
Councilmember Barbie?
Here.
Councilmember Bran absent. Councilmember Horvath?
Here.
Councilmember San Marco?
Here.
Councilmember MD?
Here.
Mayor Aspel?
Here. Let's stand and salute our glorious flag and please remain standing for a few moments of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is the agenda fine for everybody?
Yep.
And we have no agency recess. And we have some blue folder items here. It's H1. And what else is H1? And N1. Is there a motion to be received and filed?
Second.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed? Good. Okay, we have now a consent calendar, H1. We don't have these in a book, so this is really rare. An H2. So is there anybody want to pull anything? Nothing to pull? Okay, is there a motion?
No proof of consent calendar.
Second.
Anybody in the public want to say anything about the consent calendar? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? All right, now it's time for public participation on non-agenda items and all requests be taken first. And the first one is not you. Hold on. Laverne, come on down. And then anybody else that's here can have three minutes and say whatever you want. How are you tonight?
I thank you. Thank you for letting me speak so I can go home and eat dinner. First and foremost, I want to thank the city of Redondo Beach for the tremendous work done on the north end of the Esplanade where I live. We have struggled with the appearance and the holes and the dirt and everything for such a long time. And although we endured 10 months of really difficult times with the jackhammers at seven in the morning and being closed for our driveways and not having water for a whole day, it was well worth it. It really looks wonderful. And I know I speak for everybody in my neighborhood to thank you for your efforts.
Long time coming.
Long time.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, another reason why I'm here is to ask your advice, to see if there's any help that the city council can do for my building and I'm sure many of the others along the Esplanade who were built about the same time as mine. I live at San Simeon, which is 625 Esplanade. It's right at the bottom of Topaz and the Esplanade. It's on the west side of the street. It's just a lovely building. We've got 71 homes there. Built in 1974. And we are having a very difficult time with retrofitting windows. The laws now, I don't know if it's a state law or city law, but the windows that are being made now are double pane. They are not metal. They're these softer materials that don't wear out so quickly. The problem is, in order to make them strong enough to hold the weight of double-pane glass, the frames are much, much thicker than the pre-existing 42-year-old frames. And we cannot pass, with the openings that we have built into the building, we cannot pass the ingress/egress width by about one inch. We can't allow our homeowners to tear the exterior of the building apart in order to make their window openings larger. So people are not able to replace their windows if that particular opening doesn't meet the standard criteria size-wise. If you've got a window that's literally falling apart and we get a blast from the ocean, we're right there. I don't know what our people are supposed to do. So I don't know if there's some way that we should be grandfathered in with the existing openings and then being a little bit short on space. But we really need some help because people can't exist with a window that's broken.
You know, it's a work. I know how to get ahold of you.
Okay.
And Councilmember Barbie and I will meet with staff tomorrow.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
And find out about Aaron Jones and the city manager.
Yeah.
Because those buildings are all having that issue.
They were all built pretty much at the same time.
And so I've talked to the people in another one of the buildings, 575.
Okay.
So let's, I'll get ahold of you tomorrow.
Yeah, I would appreciate that very, very much. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. All right, last only written, so come on down, whoever wants to. What's in the bag? Better not be heavy.
Mayor Aspel, council, gathered friends. I am humbled to be standing here before you today, and I am honored to have this opportunity to run for mayor. I grew up here and this is a great place to live. Now that being said, I think there are some issues that we might need to address. I have come into possession of evidence. Evidence obtained by the Pinkerton Detective Agency that proves, well, let's just say, what I hold in my hands, what I hold in my hands threatens to shake the very bedrock upon which this quiet beach community is built and send shockwaves through the corridors of power. I have proof that the 1988 Redondo Beach pier fire was in fact an inside job and that this council, along with previous councils, have been complicit in the-
I know why your acting career failed, Eric. So. Go ahead and grab that bag there.
Inside one, that was a hoax.
Yes, that was a hoax, everybody. We know Eric and it's all good fun. The aren't up though, so if you want to come back down.
You still have the clock.
Okay. There you go. You told me the other day he was up something, so it's all fun. All right. No, okay, he's done. Okay, thanks. Anybody else want to come down and say a few words?
Wayne Craig, District One. I wanted to come here tonight and announce to everyone, this is our new sign for our Yes on Sea waterfront, or actually, oh, I'm sorry, wait. Yes on Sea, save our pier mall from the waterfront. Sorry, hard to get those two confused. I also wanted to talk about what the Yes on Sea actually is. It's written by residents for residents to ensure balance revitalization of a waterfront. And I'm not a $15-an-hour paid volunteer that's going to be out canvassing the city, as you've probably seen already on their website. Measure C does not require new taxes or prevent a private partner, private-public partnership. A city consultant even presented multiple financing opportunities that really don't increase taxes. Measure C doesn't require a $20 million swimming pool or an island in the harbor. These are extreme misinterpretations designed to mislead you into voting against revitalization. The reported $200 million cost of Measure C is deceitful and really a worst-case scenario to scare you into believing that the mall is the only option. It's not. The planned 524,000-square-foot mall, the size of 10 Shades Hotels, includes a 700-seat movie theater, a massive market, and a massive market hall. It will more than double traffic if it is successful, create view-blocking walls around Harbor Drive, eliminate recreational use of the harbor parking, create a dangerous boat ramp, and replace seaside again with contaminated harbor water, which I understand is on the agenda tonight. So let's just be realistic. The Measure C is what the city wants. We have 7,000-plus people that have already said, yes, this is something we need to do. Once it goes to the vote, I think it'll be important for the city to realize that there are other options here. And frankly, I encourage everyone, vote yes on Measure C. If you're not familiar with it, our website will be live soon. Again, we don't have thousands of dollars from our sponsor, the waterfront. So it is a publicly-led group. So anyway, I encourage you to support Measure C. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, there's some note cards up here from someone. Nils Narenheim, official candidate for District One. First of all, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone. Great New Year, great new start, great new beginning. So in the spirit of getting things done, looking for alternatives, and you know, obviously the waterfront revitalization project is a big deal. Everyone's talking about it in the city. We have Measure C coming up, the King Arbor Care Act that I co-wrote. You know, I started looking at some other waterfront revitalization projects. And it's important to know that the Dana Point is doing a revitalization project as well. And it's rumored that they have the three interested developers to develop their waterfront revitalization project. Bids are currently due until March 17th, so we don't know exactly when or how many people are going to be showing up and actually developing that project. But the cost of that is rumored to be around $200 million. And why that's so important is because the actual acreage of that project is 36.2 acres. That's virtually identical to the same size as our waterfront. So it's really important moving forward that we see different alternatives and different visions. And the lease agreement for them is already done. So the public can actually look at that lease agreement between the developer, whichever developer they choose to do that project, and the Orange County itself. So just wanted to keep that in mind, that we do have other alternatives, other developers who are more than happy to go develop waterfront projects, who are willing and able to do waterfront projects around the size of $200 million, which I'm sure we've all heard about. And just a last reminder about the $200 million number. When the city signed on the dotted line with, as an MOU, the project, waterfront revitalization project, was between $150 and $200 million. So much smaller projects are possible. Other developers are waiting in the wings and wanting to do projects like this. Thank you very much and Happy New Year. Have a great night and I'll see you guys out in the field.
Okay, next, anybody else? Open mic? All right. Sure, nobody wants to speak? Okay, we will move on then. Okay, the next thing up here is our discussion item. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding a Comment Letter to the Los Angeles Federal, excuse me, Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board Regarding the Tentative Waste Discharge Requirements and the Proposed New National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, for the operation of Seaside Lagoon. So we have staff over here that's going to give us a rundown. So go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, Ted Sumon, Public Works Director. I'm joined up here by Community Services Director John LaRocque and our city engineer, Andy Wenji. In the spring of last year, Mr. LaRocque was here asking the question of should we continue operations at Seaside Lagoon for the summer of 2016? As part of Mr. LaRocque's presentation last year, the NPDES waste discharge permit requirements came to question. And had it begun yet? Has the new permit begun yet? And the answer is no. If the council chose, back then, if this council chose to operate Seaside Lagoon, it would operate under the 2010 permit that was issued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Well, that has changed this year. The regional board has issued the draft of the new permit for 2017. And the new draft is loaded with new material, material that we have been fearful in the past, such as metals. And tonight, we're not asking you if we should operate the lagoon in the summer. That'll come later at another discussion. Rather, we're focusing on the concerns with the 2017 draft permit, its requirements, and preparing for the regional board's public hearing in March or on March 2nd. I will turn the presentation over to Andy, and Andy will present the history and operating of Seaside Lagoon under the provisions of the previous permit and the elements and concerns of the new permit.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Andy Wenji, city engineer. I'd like to call your attention to the screen where I have a few slides that I'll work through And as Ted mentioned, tonight, we're not, although we'll get into a little bit of the background of the permit and some of the specifics of the new permit, we're really asking for input regarding a staff comment letter. In order to get on the administrative record of the regional board, we need to provide a comment letter by a certain date. And we'd like to also get some information about a public hearing that we will likely be attending in March that talks about the new permit for the lagoon. Just a little bit of background on the operation. Of course, the lagoon operates on a daily basis between the beginning and end of the summer for about three months out of the year. We have a discharge water through the pipes there of about 2.3 million gallons per day on average. It is a unique facility for the regional board, who has the responsibility of regulating these kind of discharges. We're the only recreational facility they really know about. They've classified us as industrial because they don't really have any other category to put us in. We do provide some minimal treatment because of the health department requires us to chlorinate the water. And so we also have to dechlorinate the water before it gets back into the ocean. And one of the most important elements of the operation is that the water quality is sourced from seawater, and so it's subject to the ambient conditions of the ocean. And we can't always control what those conditions are and what that water quality is. Some background on the permit. The lagoon has been operating under an NPDES permit since 1999. Over that time, there's been a progressive reduction in allowable pollutants and an increasing number of pollutants that we're being held responsible for. The result over that time has been violations which result in fines, negotiated operating procedures, they call a time schedule order, a TSO. And then negotiating future permits has been kind of our mode to respond to those kinds of things. The current permit cycle that we're on began in 2010. It was due to expire in 2015, but has been extended pending the adoption of the new The draft of the new permit is, was made available to us just before the holidays, and we've since put that on the city's website and is part of the package tonight. We have a number of concerns. We've sought assistance from our legal team as well as technical experts, engineering consultants who are expert in this. And the concerns that have come up that are, the predominant ones are these here listed on the, on the screen now. The first one is a maximum discharge. In previous permits, the discharge was always called an average discharge, and now they've called it a maximum and limited us to that 2.3 million gallons per day. This could interfere with our normal operational variances, and we just want to address that with them in our comment letter. There's a TSS limit that was part of the 2010 permit, but we were not able to meet. And so we negotiated a time schedule order to get us some relief on those limits. That time schedule order expired in 2013, and since we've been subject to the lower limit. And that limit is back in this new permit as well. We also have some fundamental disagreement about whether TSS, which stands for total suspended solids, is a relevant pollutant that we should be trying to address since the ocean is so variable in its TSS amounts. There's a new metals effluent limitation. In the past, we have tested for metals, but we've never been held accountable for the quantity, the results of our testing. Now, with this new permit, we would be held accountable to certain numerical limits of those metals that we are testing. There's something called chronic toxicity, which is a test that measures non-lethal effects on fish and wildlife in the ocean. And it's a fairly complex test, an expensive test. Again, we've done that annually in the past, but this year we were being held accountable for the results of that, that test itself. There's some new constituents that we've never tested for that have been identified as things that were being held accountable for pollution limits. Those two new ones are cyanide and mercury, not, not elements that we suspect we would contribute to at all through the operation of the lagoon, but they showed up in the permit, the tentative permit. And they, to our, to our great relief, they've given us intake credits, which means they will take into consideration the pollutants in the influent to the lagoon when they measure our effluent. But it's not a straight, standard mathematical subtraction. They give, there are some hitches there that keep us, if, if for instance, the ambient conditions already exceed the pollutant levels, we wouldn't be allowed to discharge at all. Those final levels are very, very strict. So the intake credits they give are, should have an asterisk by them. They're not always going to work in our favor. We'd like to address that in our letter as well. Okay, so just a timeline here for the next, next few weeks. We are to provide a comment letter. The administrative report says January 13th. We did get a two-week extension, so we have until the 27th to provide our comment letter. We're taking that two weeks to do some additional scientific research to see if our, our feelings about metals and the appropriateness of metals in our permit are actually applicable to us. Following that, we, there's a public hearing that the regional, regional board will, will hold. We would like to testify at that, and that's on March 2nd coming up. After that time, the board will take into consideration that testimony, the written comments, and they will finalize a new permit. At times, they've done it at the very meeting, right after the public hearing. Other times, they've delayed it. It just depends on what kind of comments they get and how they'd like to respond to them. But we expect something will be finalized this spring before we operate this summer. And then after that, our intention is, from the staff, is to return to the city council with cost and operational implications from the new permit and seek further direction from council on how we want to proceed. I'd like to just throw out some future considerations. They're not really part of what we're asking you to inform us or direct us to, but just to put in your minds about things that we're looking into or maybe ought to be looking into in the future. As you're aware, the lagoon has been operating for over 50 years. There's been very little done in the way of infrastructure replacement and upgrades over time. There are, I'm told there's times where we, we just hope things turn on and operate. So we ought to look at investments in making that a more reliable facility.
Phone on here? Okay, thank you.
With the new permit, there is a substantial increase in the amount of monitoring that we need to do. And so those costs will increase, at least double, we expect, and perhaps more than that, maybe triple, maybe quadruple, depending on the results that we get when we do monitor. We need to look at treatment. The permit and, and the whole industry for these industrial permits is really pushing dischargers towards water treatment and, and more modernized treatment processes. And we don't have anything like that at the lagoon if we're going to continue to operate. And that's something we ought to, we ought to look at in terms of the cost to do that. We have rising risks of non-compliance for, for two reasons. One's the limits are getting lower and harder to reach, and there's more things we're being held accountable to. And then one issue that's also coming within the permit life, the five-year permit life, is the potential loss of supply water. As, as you know, we get water from the discharge from the AES plant, and their permit to discharge water goes away within this five-year cycle. And the state has already indicated they are trying to get, move away from these ones through cooling-type facilities. So we need to look at that in terms of a future issue. Again, I'll take you back to the recommendations we're asking about tonight, which are to authorize staff to submit a letter. We've provided a draft comment letter in the blue folder there. And we are waiting for some more data from our consulting engineers before we finalize that. And certainly would incorporate any input we receive tonight into that letter. And then we'd like to get additional direction from the council on the approach that we take for testimony at the public hearing in early March. That concludes my prepared comments. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions again.
Thanks, Andy. This has been going on, yeah, it was on your slide up there, but since it predates anybody that was in this room, at least elected or hired employee. It was 1999 when we first started dealing with this. And they submitted, they've, they've given us a lot of major, big bills. And every, every time it came up about threatening to close down the lagoon, we'd have a room full of people saying, no, don't, don't close it down. But a bit of history and, and everybody- But a bit of history, and everybody else can jump in, is the waters, we get the water from the power plant, it comes in, we chlorinate it now, then dechlorinate it 50 feet past, it goes back into the harbor. We actually get it, we return it cleaner than when we got it. It's cleaner than what, the way we received it.
It's not disinfected the way we disinfected.
Right, so we're giving back clean water, but it's not clean enough for this group. So, you know, this predates anything that we're talking about with the waterfront or measures or initiatives or anything. This is just by itself. I know one year when I was brand-new on the council, there was like one vote shy of shutting it down permanently, and it might have been shut down had it not been for a room full of people that were here. But what the public has to be aware is that it's very expensive, and we're at high risk to pay some severe fines. And there's a very salient point in here that says 80% of the people that use it are not our residents, don't have to pay the fines. It's open to the public for anybody in the world, but the visitors are people that are live, that have to chip in for the fines. It's a heavily subsidized lagoon there. But, you know, we don't want to close it, and it's not, you know, it might not be in the city's hands, you know. Then, again, this has nothing to do with anything about opening it up. That's an option I see in your letter in here, but that would save us any fines because we wouldn't be responsible whether the water was dirty or clean. But it's just sad, the state and everybody, the federal government gets involved in our affairs, that, you know, the city of Redondo Beach do a great job with that water that's going back in, and it's mostly birds, right? Is that what we determined before?
It's often the case in these enclosed pools that birds contribute to a lot of the bacteria.
Yeah, and, you know, it's one of those no good deed goes unpunished things. But, yeah, I'm in favor of sending this letter out and trying to reduce any fines that we would have, you know, after everybody argues about the lagoon or anything like any other thing. It would be a shame to ever have to do something about it because of a regulatory agency. So let's just keep marching forward and keep the cost down. Go ahead, Bill.
Thanks, Mayor Aspel, and thanks for the presentation, Andy. So when I first got elected in 2009, it wasn't long after that this 2010 permit came up, and we were under the gun, just like we're under the gun now, with fines and potential fines and costs and testing and tests that we didn't understand, and getting fined for things that happened two years prior that we didn't even know we were going to get fined until two years later, and boom, we got a fine, a list of them. But what's really worked is working with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, right? And that is what worked back then. They saw, you know, the seaside lagoon is clean, it's safe, people love it, they take their kids there. I swam there in 1966, I was swimming in the seaside lagoon, and it was a lot of fun as an eight-year-old, and it opened, I think, in the early '60s. So I don't know what happened in the late '90s, I guess the NPDS permits started, and then, yeah. So here we are, 18 years later. But, you know, what has worked, and what I would encourage in the letter is, you know, thanking them, first off, for their collaboration with us over the years. I mean, we worked with them on testing, and we were able to really, the TSS was the problem, and we were really able to get that under control. And there were still some hiccups with other things, oil and grease. I mean, it's cleaner going out in some respects, the pathogens are gone because we chlorinated it and then dechlorinated it, but, you know, it does get dirtier with oil and grease. We have oil and grease violations, and, well, we had chlorine violations when the system didn't work properly, and something else I can't remember. I think we actually had a chronic toxicity failure not too long ago. But it's, yeah, it's a seaside lagoon, and I think we should keep our options open as much as possible and work with them, and, you know, we knew this metals testing was coming. It's here, and that's a question I have, Andy or Ted or whoever knows, because we've been doing some metal testing, right? But we've been reporting it, but we haven't been subject to any regulations, right?
It's in the, we're required to test for it and report it, but there's no standard that we have to accomplish.
Right, and now there's a standard.
That's right.
So from what you've seen in the past versus this new standard, were we in violation in the past?
I haven't seen all of the data. There's a lot of data, and I'm fairly new, as you know. I've asked the question. The way our labs work is they flag data that exceeds certain standards, and they let us know, and it hasn't been an issue. We haven't been flagged for exceeding those standards. The regional board has a process where they measure those, that data that we've given them against some process, and they come up with, they've obviously reached that threshold where they said, "Okay, now we have to hold you accountable for these numbers because it's crossed their line." But that's a little bit, that's what we're having our consultants study to find out.
I guess what I'm getting at is it sounds to me like they're using the data that we've provided them to now set regulations for us.
Not only our data, but it's kind of the trend, the state, the whole state is doing this, yeah.
Okay. And you said we were listed as an industrial facility. What if, I mean, is there any thought to like getting us reclassified as a recreational facility? I mean, I know we're industrial because of the power plant.
It's an industrial permit. There are only four options for permits, and industrial is the one that matches us versus construction or something else.
Right, so if the, we're no longer using the power plant, it's no longer, I mean, it doesn't run, you know, 90% of the time anyway. So could we reclassify as a recreational?
They don't.
Could that matter?
They currently don't have a classification for recreational permits. Commercial facilities are considered industrial facilities, and so that's just where this lies.
What are the other classifications?
There is a classification for municipal permits for stormwater systems, a classification for construction, and the Caltrans has their own permit classification.
So that's pretty much the only classification we could fit under, okay. Yeah, so and how much more we have to test? That could be significant, be very expensive. How much do we spend right now testing?
About, on average, varies year-to-year, but about $25,000 a year.
Oh, okay, that's not too bad. Do you see any cases where the concentration, I think this actually happened once, where, you know, we test the intake, we test the effluent, where the intake is already in violation, already in violation? Have you seen any data showing that?
I haven't seen any. I'm going to just ask Geraldine to nod or...
I'm not sure.
Yeah, because in the past, I remember TSS was right, right, right there. I mean, we had so little margin.
Well, the ambient conditions for TSS over the last 10 years have changed quite a bit. We've actually not had a TSS problem recently because the ocean water has decreased in its ambient conditions.
Right.
So will that change in the future? Yes, probably. I'm not sure how.
That's the other thing that caught my eye. I mean, you say those intake credits need an asterisk, but that was like a huge gain, actually, that they were even considering intake credits. They've really opened a door now.
We want to make sure we get fully advantage.
Yes, TSS is ripe for that, because it was, that's why I asked that question, because I know that we were very close to, they were already in violation coming in. And I saw a response from AES once, because they're under these same guidelines, and they were claiming they were actually reducing the amount of, forgot what it was, by the treatment that they were putting it through. It was coming in dirtier than it was going out, so that isn't always the case. So, I don't know, cyanide, mercury, have we been testing for that?
No.
So that's all brand-new.
Yeah.
So, you know, I've certainly mentioned that in your letter. I mean, where'd that come from? That just like all of a sudden?
We're not sure.
Kryptonite, we're tested for kryptonite.
Yeah. It feels a little arbitrary.
That's kind of not even fair.
We're doing some research to see if we've ever given reason them to believe that it would be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, in your letter, I would just point out how we want to work with them, and this is an extremely popular facility. We don't want to have to close it because of these regulations. We want to work with them and collaborate with them, just like we have in the past, and find a way to operate as, you know, clean as possible and still provide this great public asset and not have to close it. I mean, you know, it's borderline having to close it because of their tightening of their regulations. But, you know, this, I think, and I may go testify because I went before, and the last time this came up, I mean, we had a big, big outreach to the public, and it was right when Facebook hit, we had like 3,000 people on it right away, and me and Mayor Jen and the city attorney, Mike Webb, went down and testified, Heal the Bay testified on our behalf. So, you know, we could just do that all over again and, you know, make sure that we have the option of operating it as-is. And I think as part of the letter, I would certainly make that point, that, you know, we may not, we may have to close this 50-plus-year-old facility that the public loves because of, you know, these discharge regulations that are changing and getting more onerous and more expensive. And they've been very, you know, they've helped us a lot, and they don't want to close it. People start writing letters and complaining, and, you know, they know how valuable it is, so I just make that point for sure. And, yeah, thank them for extending the deadline to January 27th. I mean, I was reading this going, oh, wow, so the public gets aware of this, and they get like three days to write a letter, or a week, almost a week. So what else do they have? Yeah, so the concentrations are actually within so far. And, all right, well, that kind of answers all my questions, I think, under future considerations. I mean, we had a full-blown study back in 2007. I mean, I remember that. We had a lot of options on the table, and we still have a lot of options. So some are prohibitively expensive and some aren't. Every beach community seems like they've got a pool by their, right smack, you know, Santa Barbara, right smack on the beach, pool, public pool, you know, Long Beach, towns up and down the coast have these, you know, not this type of facility, this is very unique. That's what people love about, they take their toddlers, you know, it's beach-like, but you don't have the currents, and you don't have the, and we don't have to heat it. I mean, it's not heated most of the time anyway now, and it's still extremely popular, right? I don't know how many days out of the summer the power plant was operating, but if it's not operating, it's not heated. I don't even know if the power plant operated this summer, probably for a couple of weeks, and that was it. So I don't really see heating as, plus, I think, you know, you can get a violation for discharging too hot of water, right? It's got to be under 74 degrees or something, whatever that is.
Yeah, another number.
Yeah, in the summer, it's, it doesn't sway the kids. You know, go down there, go, "Ah, it's cold, I'm not going in." It's very popular. And, yeah, I mean, you say you lose our supply of water, but what is going to change when the AES power plant doesn't operate? And when it's piping still there, right? We operate without the power plant now, so...
Yeah, it's not our facility, so we don't know what they will do with it.
You mean existing piping and...
Correct.
Right, right. It doesn't seem like that would be prohibitive to put in a system. And I know we looked at a closed-loop system, so in terms of the future, I mean, I just think for now we should just keep our options open, make sure we work closely with the board, and, you know, just point out the history of collaboration and how we've been able to keep this open and how popular it is. And, yeah, that's why they gave us a time schedule order. I mean, that was, that really isn't, it really wasn't a cost, that was a favor that they did for us, was the time schedule, to relax the TSS. I would point that out, you know, and I guess you probably will, and I'm probably saying things you already know, but I did want to make the point, you know, that they did relax the TSS, and they had a maximum daily load of TSS before, and I think it was maybe 80? Maybe they took it to 80 or something, or 60?
50, they allowed us 60.
Yeah. It was higher than what's in here right now.
50 on a, 50, I think, average, yeah, 75 daily, yeah.
Yeah, and just remind them, you know, remind them of that, because the board, it's probably totally new. I don't know, is Fran Diamond still on it, or who's on the board?
I don't know.
Yeah, so it's probably, if not a totally different board, very, very, I think I'm going to go testify, tell them the history of it. And when's the hearing, March?
March 2nd.
March 2nd, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Laura.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. And in addition to oil and grease, what other things could be increasing our metal count on that?
Yeah, we don't, the only thing that we can conceive that we're putting metals into the water would be from suntan creams and things like that, you know, zinc-based, copper-based suntan lotions, but that's the only thing that comes to mind.
Okay, and so on the intake credits, how would we get that data? How would we get the data of what the water is coming in?
We would need to monitor for it.
And specifically, do we know how would we get that? Because...
We do that now, we would do it more frequently, so it matched our effluent days, so we could do it apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay, so you can do that now?
Yeah.
And then...
Councilwoman, if I can just help to clarify that as well, we do have a spigot at the pumping station itself that fills the lagoon, so we're able to see that effluent credit or data right up front before it pumps into the lagoon.
And when the power plant isn't running, where does the water come from? Because they would shut off their water to come to us, so where does that water come from?
It comes from their discharge line that is just under the static pressure of the ocean, so the pipe is submerged under the ocean levels, and it fills up our vault where we pump water. So it's either pressurized from the supply side from the power plant, or when the power plant's off, it backfills with just water from the ocean, and we pump it from there.
Ocean or from the harbor?
From the harbor, yeah, excuse me.
Okay, so the water comes from the harbor when the power plant isn't running?
That's correct.
Okay, and then...
I'm sorry, I should say we believe that's the case, but we have...
Because the pipes, we don't know where they come from, right?
We don't really know, but that's what we think is right, yes.
Okay, so, and is there any way that we can, well, I know you've kind of answered that question already with Mr. Rand, but it seems like with the power plant no longer operating at a certain date, wouldn't we be able to change it to municipal at all? Would that help us in any way, instead of industrial?
Municipal?
Yeah.
So the municipal permit is designed for stormwater flows, not for discharges from a facility.
And would that help us or not help us? I mean, so in other words, we don't qualify for that at all, even if it doesn't?
Well, we're under a permit for our stormwater system already. It's a totally different permit with different requirements, so the power plant has no bearing on whether or not we would continue to need an industrial discharge permit.
And that municipal permit is for all the discharges out of our storm drain systems that are off our roadways and what have you.
Okay, thank you.
Christian? Yeah, to Bill's point, this, Mr. Ali here, is he the head of, is he the chair of the board, or is he staff?
No, he's a staff member.
Okay, and so it's one thing for us to go and testify in front of a board which is being prepared and making their decisions based on their staff report. What's our relationship like with staff to staff?
We've been working regularly with them. They've given us kind of pre-published tentative copies that we've negotiated back and forth. We met with them a month or so ago. A number of our staff went down to meet with them, and we actually met with Sam Unger, who's the executive over the regional board, executive staff member there.
Okay, so there is collaboration going on between staff and staff, and this letter is just really a formality, is that correct? Expressing our viewpoints.
It's our official response, correct, yeah.
Okay, I don't have a problem with the letter.
Okay.
You tell.
Would the public want to say anything? Come on, Charlie, you're the first one, sorry. Written request here, Charlie Savinsky, and then anybody else come down and speak.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, Charlie Savinsky from District 1.
Excuse me, is there a motion receiving file?
Someone?
Second.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, great. You have substantially, in front of you substantially what I've written. I believe that our city statement should include the intention to open the lagoon, so water within the lagoon is in no way different than the water that is outside the lagoon. We should put in that letter, this letter that we're discussing, date certain that it's not later than 2020, which is simultaneous to the timing, or earlier than the timing of the expiration of the AES discharge permit. The city's option, that earlier date for the remediation, which would be opening to the outside of not necessarily needing that inflow again, that remediation could be done earlier at the city's option. With that intent memorialized, it's kind of as a quid pro quo, we could say that the city would request monitoring standards be set within the lagoon only for public health and safety, but no further comparisons need to be made to the water outside the lagoon as a remediation will be taking place within the next four calendar years. Given, you know, Bill's comments about the relationship between the organizations, you know, why don't we go for the brass ring? This flexibility would allow the city, at the city's option, to use the funds needed to be set aside... to use the funds needed to be set aside for the remediation of the lagoon, and not having to pay for, set that money aside for fines in the future. So I think everybody could see that it would be a benefit to use that money for a permanent solution, rather than continuing to pay fines, burden the city, and really have no more to show for it at the end of that period of time, I guess, except for the person who is receiving the fines. But it'd also be more efficient for them. So in that spirit, why not just let them know that changes are being now, being considered now, they're going to be made soon? Why not eliminate further requirements and use the intervening time and effort to implement a permanent solution, as something that's more productive for everybody concerned, and certainly for the people locally here, who, A, have to pay the fines, and B, you know, are the users of the lagoon, well along with a number of visitors. By the way, I've swum about, with my kids, about 20 times in this lagoon, and it has never been warm. You know, and it's, you know, I don't know why people consider it to be warm, but I've swum in it probably three, four times a year for the last dozen years with my kids as they grew up. And it's actually warmer to go out in the ocean. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, one of the, your comments were that, that it is in there about the intention of opening, one of the...
Yeah, we've had that conversation with the staff.
But as far as the water, if it was closed, the water being the same as inside as outside, that, we've tried that one before, too. Anybody else I could say anything?
Good evening, city council, city staff, mayor, great people, we're down on the beach, Nelson Harenheim, yes, official candidate for Donald, for District One. So, you know, walking the streets, people are really, really concerned about Seaside Lagoon, they love using it, they love the parkland, the grass, the sand, the picnic areas down there. You know, 81,000 people a year use the Seaside Lagoon between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And I'm not sure on the number, if that go, how much that number goes up and down, and I think that's important to include on the report or questioning, because, you know, you were stated in the report, 2.3 million gallons per day, and that's equivalent, I think, to around six to eight flushes of the Seaside Lagoon per day. So if you take the amount of people that go to the Seaside Lagoon and enter the water per day, and you divide that out by how many times the water gets flushed, I don't know if that, there should be, you know, how much total suspended solids go out in the water. So if you increase the amount of water being flushed through the lagoon, you would get, obviously, a little bit less total suspended solids. You know, that's important, because that sunscreen washes off, and there's more kids, less kids, more people, less people, very important. Also, you know, the pipes that were talked about a minute ago, the pipes right now are right-of-way, directly underneath the waterfront, CenterCal project. So when we talk about the pipes and the piping system, then we should probably include that those pipes aren't going to be going away anytime soon, because if they were to go away anytime soon, then we would have to rip up, right through the middle of the CenterCal project, all those pipes, the right-of-way, which goes right between the movie, the 700-seat movie theater and the massive market hall, the street that they're putting in down there. So, if we're getting our water from those pipes and that right-of-way, then I can, we can pretty much safely assume that AES will not be tearing up the waterfront after the waterfront is built. So the right-of-way there is important to address. That's it. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Okay. Anybody else?
Evening again, Wayne Craig, District One. I guess what we're looking at tonight is Act One of Kabuki Theater Redondo. Obviously, the next stage of this is going to be, well, gee, we can't see the lagoon, what we're going to have to do, we're going to have to pave over a third of it, we're going to have to open it up to the ocean, and we're going to have to build a 524,000 square foot mall. That's pretty much what, what this is the front-loading for. And unfortunately, you know, I think that there's more considerations, Mr. Brand mentioned some interesting data, which I think should be considered, that there should be other options involved there. It seems like, I know the staff is working hard to try to do something with this product, this particular process, but it seems as though it's kind of common sense. And again, I know you're dealing with governmental agencies, and common sense may not necessarily be common. So obviously, we appreciate your hard work on that. But it does seem like what Mr. Nurnam just said, if the pipes are still there, we're still going to have a problem with metals, stuff in the ocean. And the staff also mentioned, too, we don't really know exactly where this stuff is coming from. So even after this whole thing is opened up and taken down, and the water testing still shows it's bad, we're just going to be in the same situation. So it seems like there should be some other options here, other than kind of like pushing this down a way to make it into a mall. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, I was actually prepared for that comment, I didn't know who it would come from, but this is not some kind of dance, getting ready to start the phase of, for CenterCal. This has been ongoing since before any of us were on the council. It happens almost every year. We have this dance up here, and it was being debated years before I was ever invented, or Bill, or anybody up here, about keeping it open or closed, and, and how to pay the fines. And every year, this council and other councils have fought very diligently to keep this lagoon open, and the citizens have gladly paid the fines. But there's nothing to do with one without the other. But I knew that would come up, and I want the public watching on TV to say, there's nothing to do with anything might be planned in the future or not. This is just trying to keep our lagoon in one piece and operational for this year and the next year. And just every year, and in 20 years, if this thing stays the same, they'll be doing the same outreach, and we'll be having the same argument with the government agencies. And Bill was right, we have to work collaboratively with them, but this is just something that we get, the city, not we, citizens get stuck with the tab, and we try and, we try and lower the tab by arguing our position. So, anyway, that's about it for that. I see there's a light on here. Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Aspel. I totally agree with Steve about this. We're really just giving direction for comment. I don't think we should suggest to them that we're not going to need their permit, because we're going to open it up. We just say we're looking at options of what to do with the Seaside Lagoon, the future of it. They did give us a time schedule order and relaxed somewhat the regulations, because we told them we were coming up with something, which here we are, you know, seven years later. And, Steve's right, we talk about this every year, but actually, I think we went a couple of years without talking about it. I was kind of surprised. And I think they were just backlogged, and, you know, their permit had been expired for two years, and they've just kind of been keeping going. And kudos to them, because I think last May, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, they came down, they said they were going to do this now, in the middle of our season, or getting ready to open, and, and they backed off, and they said, okay. And so here we are, nine months later.
Yeah, that's correct. And we were able to continue to operate under the prior permit that had technically lapsed, but we continued the operation without new regulations, but with the, with the prior existing ones.
Yeah, so I just think the tone and the message should be that we want to continue to work with them, we want to continue to operate it, we're going to keep our flex, keep our options open, and we may see a big change for it, and we may not. I mean, we may need this permit till 2022. We don't want to see, we don't want to get in the situation where we have to close it, and then we're, you know, this didn't happen, or, you know, yeah. I mean, because that's what we've been, that's what we fight for every year, is keep it open, keep people enjoying it, and not get slammed with the fines. They always come down with these huge fines, and we always talk them down, and we've had a good relationship, and it's worked out. So, that should be the tone of the letter for sure, and don't make any promises about what we might be doing, or anything like that.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor Aspel. Well, I guess I will beat a dead horse. So, I've read this thing now three times, and conversation's been fascinating, really got me the edge of my seat. But to me, it seems like it comes down to this one question, which is, would Seaside Lagoon require a permit or other authorizations from regional board to intake water from King Harbor? I mean, that's all we're getting at, right?
Mm-hmm.
Whether or not we need a permit if we open this thing up, right?
The, I'm sorry, to open up to the harbor.
Right.
Yeah, we are asking that question as part of the draft letter.
Right, in essence, that's what we're talking about here tonight. And then over here, another thing caught my eye, was it says, during past enforcement hearings, regional board staff suggested that penalties for prior violations could be in the billions of dollars. Have we ever seen a billion-dollar fine from a water agency? I mean, is that really likely?
Here comes the web, yeah, this will be shot, brother.
We're facing a billion-dollar fine here.
Twenty, it was either 21 or 20.1 billion dollars.
For who?
For us. So, and the reason is, and Councilmember Brand was there, and it was an actual threat in their assessment letter when they wanted to fine us, only 151,000. We still have litigation ongoing on that. We were eventually able to get it down to a potential of 51,000 right now. And the problem is, they are very rule-based, and what's something Mr. Craig, I think, said is 100% true in dealing with the Water Quality Control Board, is they don't view it as having any discretion. They just view it, you meet the standard. The TSS is based on a freshwater quarry, and, you know, it's a study from the 70s, had not taken into account any of the things we're doing or not doing. And the reason the 20.1 billion was a real threat was it's based on a fine per gallon of water that you put through. And since we're putting so many gallons through, their potential fines, it's, they treat, they don't treat it as different if we were putting that much toxic sludge through the system. And so that was an actual fine that we looked at, that led to a lot of the history that both Mayor Aspel and Councilmember Brand talked about, is all the different threats. And it wasn't, it wasn't a board hearing that we went to on the permit, because I have attended those, it was an actual hearing when they were looking at the fine, that they were assessing us. Councilmember Brand testified, too. Mayor Jen, we had Heal the Bay testifying on our behalf, which you don't see a lot with water polluters, which is what we were labeled, and it didn't matter in a lot of ways. They're just very rule-oriented, and so, so yes, it was an, that's not a hypothetical, that was an actual...
We've had this liability since 1999?
Correct. It's one of the reasons why we had the, and the problem is, they view that there's no amount of time that they can't go back and fine us for, that they have indicated there's no statute of limitation, that there's no equitable defensive latches in, in these cases. And it's why the, it was, the council came very close, as Mayor Aspel mentioned, to having to shut it down, because you couldn't risk the city's financial health on that. To Councilmember Brand's point, it was the threat of that, and the number of people who showed up and, and were protesting and were upset about it, that led them to give us the time schedule order, saying, okay, don't do that, let's try and figure out if we can give you more relaxed standards, you know, give you standards that you can live with, where you're not going to be having those fines. And although we still had assessed fines, some of which we've, we fought successfully, some of which we've paid, because they were appropriate, this new permit is a bit of a demarcation. So we've, ever since we had that significant and serious concern about shutting it down or opening it up to, because our legal opinion is, if you open it up, we're no longer discharging, we don't need this permit anymore.
But in essence, that's what we're trying to figure out with this letter.
Well, we want to find out from them if they, one of their staff members thinks something different, whereas our, our position is, we think if you open it up, or you self-contain it, either way, whether it's, it's a self-contained pool, or you open it up to the, to the ocean, either way, you're no longer discharging, and that's what this is, is a discharge permit. We have to put the chlorine in, because years ago, the city got fined by LA County Health for running, in essence, a swimming pool without meeting the, the standards of a swimming pool and putting chlorine in. Then we started getting fined by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, because we weren't meeting their standards on the permit. The permit has gotten increasingly more stringent, and this is a marked change if it goes through from the time schedule order. And that's why this is a big deal. It's, it's, it's not, I, I would say it's more than a formality, it's almost a necessity that we do this, because this, if we don't put it in the letter, then they'll, they could argue that we've waived our arguments, and they have this, this anti-backsliding rule. So even though they hold us for standards, of which they admit we have nothing to do with putting in the water, there's nothing in our process, once they set that standard, you're just stuck with it. So it's a big deal. We want this formal objection to it. It would be fabulous, as Councilmember Brand pointed out, that people who want to see Seaside Lagoon remain open in the, the form that, you know, remain in the form it is now. Really important that people show up on March 2nd to make certain, before we have this new order, that those standards are something that the city can afford to live with.
So you touched upon it, my last question, what would make us think that we need a permit if we're going to open it up? I should say, we open it up as part of this development. What would, what would make us think we need a permit at that point?
We don't think we need a permit if you open it up, but however, if you take that view, then you can't run it this summer. And I think everyone agrees that we won't be opening it up this summer. So if you're not going to run it this summer, you don't need a permit. It's one of the things that came up in one of the...
I guess I mean more into the future here. I mean, let's take this summer out of the conversation, let's, future summers, when we're, when we're considering this development and actually opening it up.
Right, you wouldn't need a, our view is, you don't need a permit at that point, because you're no longer discharging, you're no longer using the current, you know, water for the once through cooling, and then, you know, chlorinating and decor, dechlorinating, and then discharging into the, into the ocean. So...
And that's our opinion.
That's our opinion. One of their staff members has expressed another opinion that does not seem at all well-founded.
I guess that's what I'm getting at.
So we want to find out, hey, board, do you agree with this? Because we'd like to know...
Right.
When you're looking at the different options, because the three things that have been discussed, either by the council for the past number of years, or in a measure that's going to go to the voters in, in March, is, do you open it up, in which case, we don't think we need a permit, but we want to pin them down on this.
Right.
Do you close it, the way it's looked at in the past, and now you have a self-contained in essence swimming pool, or do you maintain it in the form it is now? That may or may not be possible, or may, may it not be cost too pricey for the city, depending on what the form of the permit is. You don't need one, our view is, you don't need one if you open it up, don't need one if it's self-contained. You clearly need one, the, the standard it is now.
Right.
Whether a council can continue to do that is going to depend a lot on whether the council can live with the form of the permit. Now is the time to object to it, before they make that. So anybody who was here before, when we were looking at the massive fine, anybody who wants to keep the Seaside Lagoon in the condition it's in now, make your voices heard on March 2nd, and you're giving permission to your staff to make your voices heard through, through this letter.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Yeah, what the public and the council and anybody watching has to realize, and the press realizes, you know, as we're governing, a lot, there's a lot of soundbites going on and saying, this, these, these books are cooked, depending on which point of view you have. And your human, human nature, as soon as you see that figure for 22 billion dollars, or whatever it was, you would naturally think that staff is exaggerating a tad. But I know that when we were on the council, Bill and I, it wasn't an exaggeration. We got the letter, and everybody pretty much almost fainted about that, about that amount, and we knew it was unrealistic. But when you start at 22 billion, the negotiation might only go down to 1 billion, which in case would still bankrupt the city. So, not every time, anything concerning the harbor doesn't mean that someone's trying to lobby one way or the other. This is a real important fact that the city has to deal with about our lagoon. And the staff is doing a great job, and appreciate what you're doing. I know that the public, and, and we should get out there and talk to them about it, so we just can't have an outside agency dictating to us whether we can keep our lagoon open or closed. Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know how many people realize this, but the CenterCal project is designed, their view corridor is right where the AES discharge pipes are, and they did it on purpose, so that they would have access to them. They knew full well that they were going to have to service them and, and remove them, because it's been outlawed. The state actually passed legislation banning the use of the ocean to cool the power plant, and they got phased out the end of 2020. So when CenterCal was designing their project, they designed it around the AES outfall pipes. Some argument I made a long time ago, that by the time they're building it, they won't need access to the pipes, but they weren't confident enough at the time to design their project otherwise. So, it's off by maybe a couple of years.
Okay, okay. Christian?
Yeah, I'm motion to authorize staff to submit a comment letter regarding the proposed NPD. NPDES permit for operation of Seaside Lagoon, provide staff, yeah, that's it.
Second.
Okay, others in favor?
Hi.
None opposed, good. Okay, we're moving on, and I, we'll go city manager items, but I noticed I did forget announcements up the very beginning, because we always think about it at the end. So you can do your mayor and council items along with your announcements all at one time, so Martha?
Yes, I have several announcements. Well, first, Laverne isn't here, but she expressed her pleasure at Esplanade, and how wonderful that has turned out. I live there, and I'm thrilled to have it. And the other day, I was parking my car and walking into my house, and some cyclists were coming by, and I was fortunate enough to be standing there and hear them say, isn't it wonderful to be bicycling on this street after they've done all this work? This is such a difference, this is the best, so I felt wonderful, after we went through this work and got it done. So I will be happy to check into her concerns that she brought up tonight, Mayor, with you, because I live in a place that's built around the same time as well, so I'm happy to work with her on that.
Great.
My district meeting is this Saturday, we took a hiatus during the holidays, and it's this Saturday, the 14th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Alta Vista Community Center, all are welcome. My other announcement has to do with something that came up through my meetings, and this was the desire of the community to have the 3D CenterCal model be here in Redondo for public viewing, as opposed to being El Segundo. And I'm happy to announce that we are there, we're just about done, and I will be taking a tour of the almost completed facility on Thursday, and an announcement will be imminent of when it is open to the public, and the times and dates and so forth. So I think they've done a great job to get this all set. It will be right in front of Pauli's on the pier in the parking lot, and I think it's a great location, and I'm looking forward to seeing it, and I'm glad the community is happy that we were able to get this done as quickly as we could get it there.
Good, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I don't have any announcements, but I wanted to ask Joe how we can rectify something. At the meeting where we were assigning, or we were discussing about the General Plan Advisory Committee and how we were going to choose, and by the way, I got a notice that we have to choose our members of this General Plan Advisory Committee by January 23rd. Is that date right, Joe?
Right, yeah, it's about two weeks from now.
So if somebody's interested in being on that committee, they need to start emailing the council members and the mayor and say, I want to be on that committee, because we're going to, our deadline is January 23rd.
Yeah, that's if we want to keep to the schedule that was previously presented to the council, and in the strategic plan, to get the group started with their first meeting in April.
And what didn't come back, though, and we talked about this when, I forgot the name of the company that's doing it, was an estimate for them to also include public safety in the general plan update. And that was just kind of a miss, I guess, and so, I mean, it's really important, she said it would be like another $50,000 for us to get a handle on public safety, and, and you know, how many, you know, what's crime doing, you know, benchmark the other communities, find out, you know, how many police we should have. It just seems really important not to, not to include that, and somehow, it would be good to revisit that and be able to include public...
That's on our list of things to, to do, I know there's been discussions between our staff and the consulting firm, Placeworks, I believe, the company, and we will be finding a time to bring that information back to council.
Okay, great, thank you. Christian?
Yeah, three quick announcements. My District Three community meeting is going to be on Thursday, January 19th, at Washington Elementary School, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. My special guest will be Library Director Susan Anderson. If you are interested in legislative information, the South Bay Cities Council of Governments is having a legislative breakfast this Thursday, and it'll feature either the elected officials from state, federal government, and county, and/or their representatives kind of telling you what's going on at the state, federal, and county levels. If you are interested, just email me, and I'll send you the information. Finally, I want to congratulate Laura, she was joining me with the League of California Cities, she got appointed to an Environmental Quality Policy Committee, so congrats.
Steve?
Yeah, District Four community meeting at Perry Park this Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. We'll see you there.
Laura?
And my meeting is on January 21st, Saturday, at the Anderson Senior Park.
All right, and we are, we are good, I'm glad Martha made the announcement about that model, and we will see everybody next week.
What about city manager items?
He said none.
Yeah, nothing.
Aha, you need to pay attention. We're good, good night, everybody.